And the commitment he brought to the team in keeping the team in Sault Ste Marie. Of course, Dr. Lucenda achieved many notable professional successes in life as a businessperson, as a real estate developer, and as a philanthropist. He was extremely generous to many important community institutions in the Twin Souls, including Agoma University, Lake Superior State University, the Sioux Area Hospital, and Sioux College, amongst many, many others. Notwithstanding his age, Dr. Lucenda's passing last Thursday came as a surprise. I know that our community is very grateful to have been the beneficiary of so many and so much of Dr. Lucenda's generosity, and that we join with the Lucenda family to celebrate his life and to mourn his loss. While we were speaking of Dr. Lucenda, we should also take time to honor the memory of Joe Mione. While he did not have the profile of Dr. Lucenda, there is no question that Joe was tremendously community-minded, committed to his community, committed to his family. Through Mione Collectibles, impressionally, Joe helped raise funds for Easter seals, for St. Mary's College, and for many other important causes across the community. Many of the hockey mementos at the SRS Center were generously provided by him. Joe was always willing to donate his time, to volunteer, and to help whoever he could. Our thoughts are with Joe's family at this very difficult time. On Sunday, we received word that Dr. Thomas Pledger, the president of Lake Superior State University, had passed away following complications from surgery. Dr. Pledger was a true champion for LSSU and a believer in the importance and power of education. I know many of us on council had the opportunity to meet him, and that we are shocked and saddened by his sudden passing at far too young of an age. Our thoughts are with his wife Teresa, his family, and his many friends and colleagues at Lake Superior State University in Sioux, Michigan. So to the family of those that we've lost, we respect and honor their contribution, and our thoughts and prayers are with you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you can start the meeting, please.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, under Agenda Item 1, adoption of minutes, a motion by councilors Bruny and Hollinsworth, resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting of 2017-0424 be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 3, declarations of pecuniary interest.
Counsel? Counsel Bruny.
Point two and six point one six. Daughter works for EDC.
Okay, thank you. Any others, counsel? Seeing none?
Under Agenda Item 4, approved agenda is presented. A motion by councilors Fatt and Hollinsworth resolved that the agenda and addendum for the 2017-0508 city council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, just a couple of notes on the agenda. Items 6.17 and 6.20 will be removed from the consent portion. 6.20 will be the subject of a staff presentation by Tori Prowse later on in the meeting, so we will deal with that separately. 6.17 on your addendum, there is correspondence from a member of the community opposed to the report, so we will deal with it separately. Also, counsel, the immigration committee report item, as councillor Romano is taking, who chaired that committee, has taken a leave of absence. We will be tabling that item until following the provincial election. Under our proclamations and delegations, 5.1, Royal Purple Week.
Welcome to council. Elsie, are you approaching the mic?
Yes, I am.
It's all yours.
Thank you. Your worship, Mayor Provinzano, and members of council. My name is Elsie Conley. I am the Honoured Royal Lady or President of Sault Ste Marie Royal Purple Lodge 155. We are here to request that May 14th to the 20th be proclaimed Royal Purple Week in Sault Ste Marie. As a national organisation, Royal Purple celebrated its 100th anniversary in 2014, so we are now into our second century as a charitable, not-for-profit organisation in Canada. Our local Royal Purple Lodge was established on June 2nd, 1952. This year, we are celebrating our 65th year of service to the community. In those 65 years, we have made donations to many community projects such as the Sioux Area Hospital, Group Health Centre, Arch, the Oncology Van, Pauline's Place, Breton House, the Soup Kitchen, the Firefighters Partners in Safety Project, Alzheimer Walk, for memories, to name a few. We have also assisted families requiring assistance to travel for medical needs or in need of help in acquiring assistive devices or expensive alterations to vehicles to accommodate them. We have had three national presidents from Sault Ste Marie included, including the immediate past president. We are also proud that the incoming national president is also one of our local members. Our choir, a joint effort with the Els, entertains at local senior homes and brings music to their lives. This July, we are hosting the National Annual General Meeting and Convention here in Sault Ste Marie from July 16th to the 18th. We have been encouraging our visiting members to come a few days early or remain a few days following the event, to take in the many attractions that Sault Ste Marie has to offer. Our purpose has always been to make a difference in our community and to help where there is need. Your cause is our cause. If you need help, approach Royal Purple. We appreciate your consideration of our request. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the proclamation to read. Whereas the Canadian Society of Fun-Loving, Dynamic, Dedicated Volunteers helps children in their community, and whereas this nationally incorporated not-for-profit organisation provides a forum for like-minded individuals to come together to make a difference in their communities, and whereas the principles of the Canadian Royal Purple, justice, charity, love, and service provide a strong foundation to learn and prosper, and whereas the impact of the volunteer work of Canadian Royal Purple members serves each Lodge's community, and whereas membership is open to a resident of Canada who has reached 14 years of age, who supports democratic and lawful government, and the purposes and objectives of the Canadian Royal Purple Society, and whereas a valuable asset to this community, Sault Ste Marie Lodge 155 has existed since 1952, and Royal Purple has existed in Canada since 1914. Now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, by virtue of the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Sault Ste Marie, do hereby proclaim May 14th, 2017, as Canadian Royal Purple Week here in the city of Sault Ste Marie, and we hereby recognise Canadian Royal Purple for the significant impact it has made and continues to make in our community. Thank you, ladies.
Under Agenda Item 5.2, Economic Development Corporation 2016 Activities and Results and Economic Development Week. Tom Dodd, CEO of the Sault Ste Marie EDC is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Mr. Dodd.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just a point of order to the clerk. Are we doing the proclamation first, or?
You can.
Sure.
Would you prefer we do the proclamation first?
It matters not to me. I just...
Matters not to me either.
Okay, lovely, lovely. Well, we'll put it off for the moment. We've got a proclamation that promotes this week as Economic Development Week. It's an initiative that's undertaken by an organisation that were a member of the International Economic Development Council to bring some profile to this profession and the activities that are undertaken in the communities throughout Canada and the United States. And I would point out that this year, which you're all invited to, by the way, is the first time that the IEDC is holding their conference outside the United States in Toronto, and that's in part due to the arrangement, agreement that it has with Economic Development Council of Ontario. The presentation that you're going to see has got four slides that are slightly different than the ones that you have in your package, and I will go through them as has been encouraged by a number of people quickly. But I want to start by, just give me, let's see if we can get this right. There we go. So I'm going to go through three things very quickly, or as quickly as I can, and I would say at the outset, a couple of things. For all the councilors and for any member of the public, we present a lot of information here in a very short period of time. We're delighted to have any of you come and spend some time with us. A number of you do on quite a regular basis, but we would throw open our arms to have you come down and go through some of these results in detail. There's a lot of information. We do a lot of tracking, and I certainly won't do it justice in this particular presentation, but I encourage you to come and discuss it further with us. The first order of business is to talk a little bit about new information we've received about the community. It's separate from the new data we're getting from StatsCan. This information is made available to us because of a partnership that we've entered into with the Ontario Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, and a data analysis organisation out of the United States called MC that undertakes a very detailed analysis, and more importantly for us, has specific analysis on the Sault Ste Marie economy. And what I'm presenting to you tonight is to give you a sense of how big the economy is and where the value in that economy exists. Sault Ste Marie's economy in total, and the term that's used is gross output, this is GDP plus all the intermediate expenditures that occur, is $11 billion. 2.8 billion of that is what characterises, in this case, the real GDP, which is done in $2,007. It supports approximately 37,000 jobs and represents 1.46 billion in wages. And the really important part, and what's quite remarkable about the community, is that the level of export activity, and that's the delivery of goods and services outside of the region, that's 8.8 billion. And you'll see where that comes from very shortly.
Oops.
In terms of the detail, manufacturing is the community's most economically important industrial sector of all the 20 that are identified, and we can go down in this particular database, right down to very, very specific pieces of information. So I can pull out data with respect to the steel company, data with respect to Tenaris and the sectors it in. But what's really important to understand is, is these numbers here. The manufacturing is far and away the most important economic sector in the community. It's 60% of our gross economic output, 70% of all of our exports, 11% of our jobs, and 17% of all wages. And so when we talk about what we want to do with the future of the community, I think everybody passionately wants to diversify the economy, but I think it's important to understand the starting point where we're commencing this journey. And I would say that we've also made substantial progress in diversifying the economy, although the magnitude of this sector is a little bit challenging. Steel within the sector represents 7.43% of all city jobs and 64% of all jobs in the sector. It's 12% of the wages, 73% of all wages in that sector. It's 48.6% of the gross economic output, and 80% of that sector's output. And finally, it's at 68.43 of all exports. So steel is it. The other big consideration, it's another part of the economy, is government. When you combine public administration, health and social services, and educational services, you suddenly realise that those two elements are the leading factors in what happens in this economy. And these particular areas are not necessarily ones that export their services. To some extent, you'll see in public administration, but health and social services are for the people here. Educational services are for the people here. The challenge is that there's a lot of money in these two particular sectors, and how do you take the resources that are there and transform them into something that is an exportable good or service? Two communities that have been successful at that are Thunder Bay and Sudbury. That's why you have health sciences centres, you have DNA research labs, and a number of other things that have taken health, and government, and education, and combined them, and really done something that's a little bit incremental to the regular activities. I'm going to, I won't spend, whoops, I'll switch here. Let me speed this up again. So to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, these are the percentage of Sault Ste Marie jobs and where they break out. So what you see here, this is manufacturing. This one is health, it's the big one. This one is education, and this one over here is public administration. The materials I provided you, we have sort of a colour coding for all these sectors to make it easier to see. In terms of wages, manufacturing, education, health, public administration. In terms of gross output, that long column is manufacturing. The next biggest one, way over to the right, is public is manufacturing. The next biggest one, way over to the right, is public administration. And again, in exports, you'll see that there's two areas. Now, the reason public administration has exports is because we're a region-serving community, that we serve an area outside of just Sault Ste. Marie. I bring those to your attention just as we frame the discussion for economic development. These are kind of critical issues that we need to keep in mind. There are lots of areas in the manufacturing that we can expand upon, but I think those are important to consider. Now, in our little part of the world, we focus on some targets, and each year, we try to achieve those targets. I think this year, we were looking at about $20 to $25 million in new investment. We got 19. The total value of those projects was $34.7 million. That is over 30 new businesses, startups, and 20 new business expansions. Those results translate into the 233 jobs, new jobs, and 320 jobs that were retained. We have about 232 active files, and just to understand in broad terms, there's about 2,000 businesses in Sault Ste. Marie, and as I'm sure Rory would point out, 98, 99 of some of those are small businesses. And we have done an assessment of what our contributions have been, and we've determined they're important to the city. And these numbers, by the way, for the first time, and I'm delighted to say, Tom Bear came down, had a chat with Dan for about an hour and a half, reviewed these numbers, and I think a number of people have often said, well, where do you make, do you make, like, do you make these numbers up? Like, where do they come from? Well, I can tell you, we've got a spreadsheet, and this is certainly something that we very much focus on. Our participation ranges from consultation to doing applications, to working with the client back and forth, but this is sort of the sum total of those kind of activities. Other projects and programs, Millworks has been a resounding success. Enormous activity. It's booked up. We expect to do some additional work and expand our services there because of the volume of activity. We've made very regular visits to those companies that have great pit, and between 2010, 2016, about 90 students in the region have enrolled in this program. Starter Company, which ended last, has ended, and is now, we've got now a call company, thing called Starter Company Plus, used to be focused on youth, now it's on, it's available to all ages. It's a $5,000 grant that puts forward, and this gives an example of the results there. Invest Sault Ste. Marie's new website. I encourage you all to go to it. It's got all the updated, up-to-date information that Canada provides. In addition, we've done some work with Ontario Works on ten individuals. The other project's Port of Agoma, a big priority. Airport development's an interesting one because it's a partnership of our, with ourselves and the Airport Development Corporation on how we can utilise that piece of land for a variety of new businesses. And this is just one example about the Airplane Painting Company, but from a defence perspective, from the development of fairly highly skilled, well-paying jobs, everything from JD Aero to a number of other new terminals to service aircraft, that's the kind of thing that we're really focusing on. And as you may have heard today, and I'm delighted that the mayor will be joining, CANSEC and our focus on developing defence. CANSEC is the Canadian Trade Show for Defence and Security, very important to the companies in our town that have the capability of producing high-quality and high-value stuff.
So that, this Northern Ontario Road Defence Forum that was in the Sioux, that's what led to me, you can ask later, but that's what led to me going to this CANSEC conference later this month?
Yeah.
Next month? I'm not sure when it is.
At the end of this month, yeah. And we're very grateful for that. Finally, sorry.
Did you want to ask a question now? Let's, let's let him, let's let him finish.
Okay, very quick.
You're number one.
Later on this week, just to plug, Norant is coming into Sault Ste. Marie, the two executives will be here on May 10th. They're going to have a luncheon and talk about what their plans are, both for the Ring of Fire and what they're looking for for smelter location. I encourage everyone who has an interest in having that opportunity come. It's huge. The actual constructions between 600,000, 600 million and a billion dollars. It will employ, starting about 350 people, and up in the second stage will be up 500. The jobs for the base, sort of, employees are about $100,000 a year, and the salary employees are about $150,000 a year. So it's quite a value.